We've been called to do. We thank you for the men and women here and for their commitment. We pray that you continue to bless them as they serve with dedication and grace. I ask Father that you would bless B I S D, bless our communities and neighborhoods, bless our schools, bless our students and educators, our administrators and leaders. Father, bless us all in a way that draws us nearer and closer to you. And we pray this in Jesus' mighty name. Amen.
Amen.
First item of business tonight is to consider the adoption of an order canvassing returns of the May 3rd, 2025 B I S D Board of Trustees election. Our presenter is Cassie Baldaris, Director of Communications and Marketing. Cassie?
Thank you. Good evening, Board. Mr. Edwards, so in front of you, you all have packets. The first page of that packet is the summary of all the results of our trustee election from May 3rd. And then the other two very lengthy packets are from the county, and that is the results from just overall results and then by precinct. So feel free to go through those if you'd like. But I'll just do a brief summaries on that first page. So we had elections for place five, place six, and place seven. Place five was, the candidates were Chris Dillon and John Eason. Sorry. Okay, so we had 2,697 total votes. 1,376 of those were for Chris Dillon, and 1,321 of those were for John Eason. That was 51% for Dillon and 48.98% for Eason. And I'm sorry, this is going to be a lot of numbers. For place six, we had a total of 1,990 votes for Matthew Mix. That was 100% of the votes that he received since he was unopposed. And for place seven, we had 1,988 votes, and that was also 100% of the votes for Ashley Moochink for, since he was unopposed. And then you can see below there are just some details as far as voter turnout in the past few years, and it was a voter turnout in Bastrop County elections of 7.7%. So that's just an overview of that, so you can move forward.
Thank you, Cassie. Do I have a motion?
Go ahead.
I move to adopt the order canvassing returns of the May 3rd, 2025 B I S D Board of Trustees election as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Next, we'll have the administration of the oath of office for our new board members, and Judge Benton Nescue will be administering the oath.
First, we'll have Mr. Dillon for oath of office. All in favor? And will?
It will.
Did the best of my ability?
Did the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state. So let me go.
Thank you.
Next is our student speaker for the character education trade for May, which is integrity. Mr. Edwards, will you please introduce our student speaker?
That would be my pleasure. This evening, I have the honor of introducing you all to Damian Guerrero. He's a sixth grader, a student at Cedar Creek Intermediate. He's a third-year GOAT exhibitor at the Bastrop Area Livestock Association, and I was impressed by this, by the way, Damian, a Rockney 4-H Council member. When he grows up, Damian plans to attend Texas A&amp;M University to study animal science. And again, Damian, I love the shirt. Great job.
Thank you, sir. It's a blessing and honor to be here. My name is Damian Guerrero. I attend Cedar Creek Intermediate. Today, I will be talking about integrity. Integrity is the quality of being honest and having strong moral principles, moral uprightness. Integrity means to me is to be honest, a honest person in life, and to always be loyal, always be a nice person, including at school. Always be a kind person at school. Never bully, also to be respectful to my teachers and peers. Integrity also means to me being honest and having strong moral principles, consisting choosing to do the right thing even when it's difficult or no one is watching. At home, I show integrity by my little sister and being respectful to my family, including being responsible at home feeding my animals. I am a firm believer, I like to speak, treat, and respect others like what I would like to be treated and respected. I would like to thank my parents, Amanda Manuel Guerrero, and my big brother Nicholas Galan, for instilling me in my good moral at a young age. Also, my beloved grandfather, he's also played a big role in my good mannerism and guidance. Thanks for your time.
Before you get away, Damian, we have a gift for you, and I'd like you to introduce your sister and your mom, and thank your principal for being here to support you tonight.
This is my mother, Amanda Guerrero. And this is my little sister, and this is my principal, Ms. Prisky, Principal of CCI.
Notebook two. That's a great touch. I hadn't seen an old-school notes like that in a while, so great job, Damian. Thank you for all that you do. At this time, I'd like to introduce, we have a couple, well, only one sitting at the table, of our SSAC students. That's my superintendent student advisory council that I meet with on a monthly basis to hear from the kids on what issues are important for them, what we can do to improve our schools. And so I'm gonna have Isabella, if you just introduce yourself, your school, and what you've been up to.
I'm going to call out a review of speeches from you.
That's it. And I see Emma back there. I'm not gonna make you come up, Emma, but congratulations on being here tonight. So, thank you all for being here. And there's another, a couple important people I'd like to introduce you to, some new faces. I'd like to introduce you to our new director of Fine Arts, Mark Tayus. Mark, if you'll just stand up and give us a wave. He has truly hit the ground running. We're so glad that he's here. You hanging in there, Mark? Say, yes, sir, we're doing great. Anyway, it's great to see him, and I wanted to introduce you two. Did Josh make it back in? We have a new maintenance and operations director, Joshua Thomas. He was sitting right there, but he probably had to go fix the air conditioner or something. All right, well, we'd like to welcome them, of Bastrop ISD, a place we're very proud of, and we're glad that you chose to join us here in our work. Thank you. All right.
Next, we'll have our special recognitions. The first is our Paraprofessionals of the Year, including District Elementary and Secondary Paraprofessionals of the Year, and our Teachers of the Year, including District Elementary, Secondary, and Rockstar Rookie Teachers of the Year. Our presenter is Jennifer Everly, our Chief Academic Officer.
Evening, School Board and Mr. Edwards. I'm excited to be here tonight to be able to recognize our Paraprofessionals and Staff of the Year, Teachers of the Year. So each year, our campuses and the service centers select Paraprofessionals of the Year. These staff members go above and beyond in a large variety of roles to make sure our students have everything that they need on a daily basis. So let's start with our Elementary Paraprofessionals of the Year. Elementary Paraprofessionals, if I call your name, will you go ahead and come to the front for me, please? We have Amanda Castillo, Itzel Hernandez Gomez, Michaela Sepeda, Tammy Rayboyar, Jennifer Porres, LeAnn Dobbs, Belinda Boone, and Maria Rodriguez. Go ahead, if you guys wanna come up front. You can go ahead and have a seat for us. And now we'll recognize our Secondary Paraprofessionals of the Year. We have Ms. Emma German, Jocelyn Goodlow, Adriana Cornejo, Ashley Granham. If you guys will go ahead and come up for me, please, if you're here. Laura Perez, Ashley Garza, Sarah Ann Atkinson, Victoria Maldonado, Katie Yonkin, and Elaine Bravo. Go ahead and come right up here. Yep. Okay, thank you, ladies, if you can go have a seat for us. Did they get in there? Okay, yep. Okay, our Elementary Teachers of the Year, they also are selected by the campus, and we're going to start with our Elementary. Melanie Youngblood, if you're here, go ahead and come up, please. Kelly Reyes, Marissa Sandoval Gage, Ruby Zamaripa, Valerie Hopkins, Celia Divala, Casey Boardman, Messenia Jaimez. And last but not least, we have our Secondary Teachers of the Year. So again, if you'll come up when your name is called. Connor, Connor Carlson, sorry, Connor Callison, try again. Wendy Herman, Jeremy Delott, June Carnahan, Christine Tucker, Romero Moreno Jr., Lori Hershapp, Tammy Edie, Idi Lopez Robles, and Robin Guerrero. Do I need to go backwards? Okay, oop, yep. Okay, once those staff members are selected, they move on to the district level where a committee chooses our Paraprofessional of the Year for B I S D, our Teachers of the Year for B I S D, as well as our Rockstar Rookie Awards. So we're gonna announce those winners right now, starting with our Paraprofessionals of the Year, which for elementary, have Ms. Amanda Castillo from Bluebonnet Elementary. If you'll go ahead and come back up, she's here. And Ms. Emma German from Bastrop Intermediate School. B I S D. Yeah, if you guys wanna stay up, we got two more rounds of this, guys. Then we have our Rockstar Rookie Awards. Let's just, our Rockstar Rookie Awards. This year, those go to Ms. Bailey Renfro from Colony Oaks Elementary, and Ms. Julissa Adams from Bastrop High School. Okay, and then the last one, we have our Teachers of the Years. These two ladies will go on to represent B I S D as a candidate for the Region 13 Elementary and Secondary Teachers of the Year. And those teachers are Ms. Ruby Zamaripa from Camino Realum Elementary, and Ms. June Carnahan from Cedar Creek Middle School. Let's give one round of applause again for all of our educators. Thank you so much, guys.
Next, we'll have our top students from Colorado River Collegiate Academy, Cedar Creek High School, and Bastrop High School, including valedictorian and salutatorian. Our presenters tonight are Martin Conrady, our principal at Circa, Casey Stagman, our principal at CCHS, and Crystal Gabriel, our principal at BHS.
Good evening, Board members and B I S D community. I have the pleasure of announcing the top 10% for the Colorado River Collegiate Academy. Our number, and I'm not sure, are we?
It should be like, yeah.
There we go. All right, our number four student is Leslie Vallejo Rayboyar, and she is the daughter of Miguel Vallejo and Alicia Rayboyar. Leslie will attend Texas State University and major in elementary education. Hopefully, we can hire her when she's done. Our number three student is Alyssa Ocampo. She is the daughter of Ernest Incendio Ocampo. Alyssa will be, will attend Tulane University in New Orleans and major in mechanical engineering. Alyssa Ocampo. Jesús Maldonado Reyes is our salutatorian. He is the son of Joaquin Maldonado. And Maria Reyes, he will major in accounting and finance at Texas State University. He's currently at HEB right now, working. And our valedictorian is Jayton Nelson, who is the son of Ian and Shannon Nelson. Jayton will attend Texas A&amp;M University in College Station, where he will major in engineering. Jayton Nelson.
All right, good evening. I have the pleasure of introducing our top 10 students from Cedar Creek High School. So if there's any Cedar Creek High School kiddos here, if you guys could come on up. Number 10 for Cedar Creek High School is Valeria Aguilar Del Toro. She's the daughter of Maria Del Toro. Valeria will attend Texas State University, and she will major in electrical engineering. Also serves as our Valley Populatico co-captain, and she'll be recognized in a few minutes for that. Number nine is Alina Carrio Valerio. She is the daughter of Annalee Valerio. Alina will attend Texas State University to major in biology and minor in medical humanities. Number eight is Emma Becker. She's the daughter of Chase and Tracy Becker. Emma will attend Texas A&amp;M University and major in business management. Number seven is Victor Avilas Rodriguez. He is the son of Oscar and Anise Avilas. Victor plans to attend Texas State University, where he will major in finance. Number six, yes. Number six is Brooke Godfrey. She's the daughter of Jimmy and Kimberly Godfrey. Brooke will attend the University of Texas at Austin and major in public affairs. Number five is Emery Orsini. Emery is the daughter of Edgar Nicole Orsini. She will become a Baylor Bear and will attend Baylor University and major in business. Number four is Nicole Kadura. She is the daughter of Rodney and Tracy Kadura. She will attend Texas State University and major in communications disorders. Number three is Mia Benavides. She's the daughter of Armando and Ana Benavides. Mia will pursue music education from the University of Texas at Austin and come teach at Cedar Creek High School in four years. Our salutatorian is Faith Frank. Faith is the daughter of Sanford and Anita Frank. Faith will attend the University of Texas and major in biology and will move on to become a doctor in dermatology. And our Cedar Creek High School valedictorian is Annabelle Bordelon. Annabelle is the daughter of Clint and Stephanie Bordelon. Annabelle will attend Texas State University, and she will major in mechanical engineering.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Crystal Gabriel. I'm the proud principal of Bastrop High School, and we'll be introducing our top 10 this evening. Number 10, Emma Grezenbeck, is the daughter of William and Tanya Grezenbeck. She will attend Texas A&amp;M University, May's School of Business, and major in accounting. Ariana Gearhart is number nine and is the daughter of Nisi and Robert Beckner. Ariana has enlisted in the United States Space Force. Adrianne Pantegua is the son of Catiano and Sonia Pantegua. He will switch colors from maroon to burnt orange, which is one of the best colors, as he pursues a degree from the University of Texas in Austin. Jocelyn Galan Millian is the daughter of Hugo Galan and Azmina Milan Medina. She plans to join the Red Raider Nation and will attend Texas Tech this fall. Number six is Landon Buckner. He is the son of Richard and Lorena Buckner. Landon will attend the University of Texas in Austin. Number five is Hayul Loza Arzate, and he is the son of Pastor Loza Rebular and Maria Arzate Martinez. He will attend the University of Texas in Austin and major in biology. Noriel Loza Arzate is the son of Pastor Loza Rebular and Maria Arzate Martinez. He will also be attending the University of Texas in Austin and major in biology as well. All right, and number three for BHS is Kyle Gertz. He is the son of Joe and Stephanie Gertz. He will be attending Texas A&amp;M in College Station and majoring in computer science. And this year's Bastrop High School salutatorian is Cooper Cervantes. Cooper is the son of Perry and Sarah Cervantes. He will attend the University of Texas in Austin and major in biology. And this year's valedictorian for the class of 2025 is Josh Goslink, or John Goslink, goes by Jake, sorry, I apologize for that. He is the son of John and Sarah Goslink. He will attend UT in Austin and major in business in the Macomb School of Business. Congratulations. Thank you so much, guys. Y'all are amazing. Y'all are amazing.
Olympics athletes, our presenter is Christine Tucker, Special Education Olympics Coordinator.
All right, hi, I'm Chrissy Tucker. I'm the B I S D Special Olympics Coordinator and Head of Delegation, as well as the cycling and bowling coach, and I'm also the district adapted P E teacher. Our Special Olympics program provides opportunities for qualifying students ages 8 to 22. So we service a pretty wide range of kiddo, and we want them to be active and compete in a variety of sporting events. This year, we had 30 athletes coming from five B I S D campuses across the district, competing in four sports, bowling, basketball, cycling, and soccer. These are a few of our representatives tonight, and you can see they're sporting a lot of hardware. So with 30 athletes, I didn't actually keep a medal count, but there were way too many to count, I promise you. So they were very successful in all of the sports that we did this season. We've also welcomed quite a few new athletes, and they're really just learning and focusing on lifetime fitness and wellness, and we are really lucky to compete against other Area 13 delegations and schools and all of the competitions that we do. One of those competitions is actually held here in Bastrop at Bob Bryant Park, and that's our soccer competition. But this program would be impossible without the help of so many volunteer coaches and volunteers. Mark Medley, Derek Eberly, Shelley Peach, Deidre Stevens, and Kelly Hubley, as most of you know, as our S P S admin team, volunteer their time and help coach our sports. Bastrop pals comes out to support us, and we have several community volunteers, and it absolutely would be impossible without our families, who come and help support their kiddos when they need it. So let's hear about our athletes that we have here with us tonight. First up, one of our younger athletes, Carter Cruz. He participated in bowling, basketball, cycling, and soccer. Then we have Evan Henning. He competed in bowling, cycling, and soccer. Gracie Denson competed in bowling, basketball, cycling, and you see she's sporting her letter jacket that she earned with us this year. Next up, John Anticata. He competed in basketball and soccer, one of our new athletes to our delegation this year. And Kimwell Rios competing in, competed in bowling, cycling, and soccer. Thank you so much for having us. If anybody has students or anybody's looking for an amazing volunteer opportunity, please come volunteer with us. I promise you won't regret it, and you'll be working with us for a lifetime if you come just once. So, thank you guys so much.
Next, we'll have a recognition from our Cedar Creek High School Ballet Folklorico. Our presenter is Ivan Ramirez from our Cedar Creek High School dance teacher.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ivan Ramirez. I'm the director of Ballet Folklorico Orgullo Mexicano at Cedar Creek High School. And I brought some stuff just because I stuttered. Okay, so as the second year here, I wanted to say that we've been able to accomplish a lot in, with our program and with our students, and being able to also have a 93% passing rate of our students in their first semester, and then 100% successful passing rate second semester of this, of the season. It's been a really, it's something to be proud for, proud, and in terms of like being accomplished and our accolades this season. We have, in January 31st, we attended North Texas Folklorico Concerts at the A T and T Center in Dallas, Texas. We came home victorious, where we received these two banners, and we won Best of Best Judges' Choice Award with the best large ensemble for our JV, best small ensemble for our JV, and best large ensemble for our varsity teams. And then we went to February 15th through the 16th, we started our second competition at Bailes de Mi Tierra at St. Edwards University, where we defended our title and received grand champions for the second year in a row, receiving the Best of Best Judges' Choice Award with our Zacatecas, which is this one right here. We also received first place in Zacatecas, second place in Hidalgo, third place in Nuevo León, and then our large groups, we received a first in San Luis Arribeiño, second in Querétaro, second in Sinaloa Costa, and first in San Luis, first in Zonas Arribeiño, second in Tamalipos Wasteco, first in Chihuahua, first in San Luis Potosí Wasteco, first in Hidalgo, and second in San Luis Potosí. And this is from our solos, duets, small groups, ensembles, large groups, and cuadros. Then on March 28th through the 30th, we had the opportunity to attend state in McAllen, Texas, competing for the second year in a row. And there, we compete with the top dance programs in the state of Texas, not only that, but in nationals and in Mexico, because there's, you go head to head for pretty much overall competition. And there, we were, we were proud to say that we received the best of show for our Hidalgo cuadro, and we also received a best male dancer, Mr. Aaron Castillo here. He received best male dancer from all the students competing, they're not only private but public, and also university students. So he went again, he competed with over 1,600 students, and he was chosen as best male dancer. We also attended, we received, again, a list, I'm sorry, there's a big list of places in terms of like first, we received first place, second place, third place overall. Then on May 2nd through the 4th, we had the privilege of attending nationals at the Hyatt Regency Baytown Houston. We were also ecstatic to receive Judges' Choice Award, receiving the Best of Best Folklorico Traditional Cuadro, going up against private and public schools, which is our main trophy here, and that was at nationals last weekend. So again, we competed against a lot of groups and a lot of, from public, private, professional people attending there. And we received first in San Luis Arribeiño, first in Sinaloa, second in, or we received the second in Ana Quincinera Jalisciense piece that we did, third in Nuevo León. We did several large groups and small groups. We had a total of 18 first place, 12 second place, and 7 third place overall, and a Best of Best in every competition we attended. And currently, right now, we're working on our auditions this week, so we're excited to see what the next season brings us. So thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Our choir, U I L concert and sight reading. Our presenter is Madison Shortz, C C H S choir teacher.
So Ms. Shortz could not be here tonight, so I'm going to speak in her place on our choir students. So tonight, we have Mia Benavides and Annabelle Bordelon representing our choir. Our choir students went to U I L on April 4th, and our mixed choir received ones onstage, which that's the highest you can receive, and then they received a two in sight reading. Our treble choir, which consists of these two ladies and two others, they received ones onstage and ones in sight reading. And I can just say what an honor it is to watch these two ladies grow in the past four years. They have just really grown into their own, and just to see their accomplishments that they have succeeded in, to see the work that they've put in, especially in choir, have the privilege to go to their classrooms and watch and see the work that they're doing, and they're working so hard every day, and they have just been, they've made Cedar Creek very proud, they've made me very proud as a principal, so I just want to say thank you.
Next, we'll have our Bastrop High School Choir, U I L concert and sight reading. Our presenter is Jenny Shu, our choir teacher.
Thank you so much, board members, for giving me this opportunity to brag on my students, and I see enough of them, so you can take a good look at them. B H S choir has made history this year at U I L concert and sight reading. This year, our choir students were awarded superior rating in the concert portion and in sight reading portion, and we have not gotten this award sweepstakes for 20 years. So this is since 2005. The furthest back of records I could find is 2005. Many have told me that it's history, so I don't think they have earned, we have earned sweepstakes before this. So I am super proud of my students, and the evaluation takes in two parts. One part is the concert part, which is singing three pieces of music, which is leveled, and the other part of it is sight reading. Sight reading is getting a new piece of music that's never been published before, right before you walk in the door, and then as a choir, they have to sight read it in six minutes and then sound out for first reading. Teacher cannot help sing it. There's no piano help them to figure it out. That's what sight reading means. And Bastrop has struggled doing, getting good ratings on sight reading, and I made it my personal goal to tackle this challenge. The first day I got here, we're like, I'm, I'm on it, sight reading. And sight reading is really skill-based. You cannot fix sight reading, you cannot over-train sight reading, it's from day one. It is grunt work, boring work, and I am so proud of my students because they are, they have nice attitudes, and they are hard workers, they have strong work ethics, and if nothing works to coerce them to work, food always works. Because I included two of the five pictures that involve food. The last one is breakfast burrito, and those were awarded to students with the most frequent tall round bowels. So that's, so letting you know that we start from groundwork, and I am just super proud of our students. They have overcome so many challenges, and one being not in the same class period, so we always have to have extra rehearsals, or we have to tag team, and they have just stepped up, they showed up, and they show out, and I want you all to be so proud of them, and hopefully, next year, we continue with the great work that we have done. And I am very, very, very fortunate to have juniors here, and of course, one freshman. But juniors are, juniors are the, the foundation, because they get to lead into the senior year, and then we get to have more work built up. And if I have too many seniors, then I have to start over. So I am very, very fortunate, and I am a proud teacher, and this is one of our biggest, biggest accomplishment this year. So thank you so much for having us. Thank you.
Next is our Bastrop High School baseball team. Our presenter is Daniel Correa, our head coach.
Waiting for our boys. First of all, I just want to say thank you for having us. This has been three years kind of in the making. Couldn't have been done without our admin, all their support. It's changed dramatically since I've first been here, having, you know, not just on the field but off the field. Our GPA as a program is 3.8, no failures in the program, just first time making playoffs since 2016, seven times since 1980, like, those are numbers, it's like, it blows my mind, and it's kudos to these guys and the commitment level that they've made. I couldn't be more proud of them. I know we have two seniors, and I hate, or three seniors, I'm sorry, hate saying goodbye to them, but at the same time, you know, we have 95% of our program coming back, and that excites me, and hopefully, it's just the beginning. So, thank y'all.
Next, we'll have our Bastrop High School softball district champions. Our presenter is Teresa Morgan, the head coach.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. Goodness, so many great things to say, but the thing I like to brag about more than anything in hearing Coach Correa's numbers, I'm just going, wow. I graduated seven seniors out of a team of 11 girls, so I have four returning varsity athletes next year. So I think about the rebuilding, I'm like, yeah, that's, that's totally where we're at, but in seven seniors that are graduating, five of those girls made Academic All-State, which means that they maintained a 94 or better average all four years that they were at Bastrop High School. I'm proud of that. Yeah, yep, give it to them. We, we carried a very small varsity group, and every one of them made Academic All-District, which means that in our season of play, they were 90 or better average across the board for all of them. And academically, I couldn't be more pleased. This year, we were district champs, and that has never happened in the history of our school and of this program at our school. So we're real excited about that, and we're real proud of them for the work that they've put in. They are exceptional young ladies at our campus, and they stand out as leaders in every way. So, thank you for your work.
Next, we'll have our Bastrop High School Girls Golf Regional Qualifiers and State Qualifier, Carly Sherman. Our presenter is Ramonda Watley, the head coach.
And I'm going to turn this over to Carrie Champagne, because he speaks way better than I do.
I don't know how true that is, but she does speak well, but for whatever reason, a microphone terrifies her. So anyway, it also gives me an opportunity to talk about girls golf at Bastrop High School, and the reason our golf team has been so successful since I've been in this sport is the behind-the-scenes work from Ramonda Watley, our head coach. She pours her entire heart and soul into this program, and I'm not certain that all golf programs around the state, because I see it firsthand, take as seriously developing girls golf, and Coach Watley does, and so I want to start off by that. And you'll see it in the success that our program has sustained since I've been in it. This year, we had the privilege of watching our girls complete their fifth consecutive district championship, and this is over three different districts because of biennial ri-. realignment with UIL. Our girls made it to regionals for the fifth consecutive time as well as a team and not just individuals. And then we also enjoyed having a girl at, at the state tournament. So all four of the girls you see here, along with one more that isn't with us this evening, are Academic All-District. And then Coach Watley just heard from the Texas High School Coaches Association that we have a second-team All-State, Academic All-State, that's Carly Sherman. And we have a first-team Academic All-State, Adriana Gerhart, she's ninth in her class as well. That's not a surprise to see that that happened with these two ladies. Our two seniors this year are Adriana and Carly. Carly competed at the state tournament for the second time. She most likely would have qualified last year, but was unable to attend. It's been a privilege to watch her play and she will continue golf at the University of North Carolina in Asheville. So thanks for giving us a couple of minutes, Mr. Edwards and the board, to let us kind of brag on Bastrop High School golf. We're very proud of our program. I'm very proud to work for Ramonda Watley as our head coach. And anything else I leave out there?
Next we'll have our Bastrop High School Track District Champs. Our presenter is Stephen Mayberry, our head coach.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank the board, thank the administrators for the opportunity I had to coach in Bastrop for 31 years. I appreciate everything y'all done for me here in Bastrop. And having the opportunity to coach these great young student athletes, I appreciate it. This year, if I was going out for retirement, which I am, this is a great way to go out. We won, I won district in football. Also, we took district in track and we took it in a great way where, you know, I never asked my coaches or anybody what place we're in while the track meet is going on because I just can't handle, I can't take it. So I had to wait till the end when they bring everybody up and all the schools is there and they announced it. And I got to hear them say, runner-up, Bastrop Varsity Girls. First place, Bastrop Freshmen Boys. First place, Bastrop JV Boys. First place, Bastrop JV Girls. First place, Bastrop Varsity Boys. Couldn't get any better. Couldn't get any better than that. Couldn't get any better than that. Also, I'd like to thank, it's a few of our athletes right now, we usually carry about 180 kids in our track meet, but we had a couple of kids, a lot of kids go to our area, also go to regionals. The regional was Zachary Rickerson, Taylor Hurclaws, Jalen Grattan, and Maggie Haywood made it to regional with a lot more that's not here that made it regional. Also, we have one young lady that made it to state this year, and that was Maggie Haywood that made it to state. Can we give her a hand? Grayson Thompson also made it to regional and poll vote, just walked in, coming from football, I appreciate him making it. And also, I want to take this opportunity to thank my coaches behind me, did a marvelous, great job. Student athlete with their commitment, their belief, their dedication to our program, it just, like I say, if you couldn't, haina happy and pekai proud, I am for these young ladies, young men.
Coach Mayberry, before you leave, I want to thank you for your service to this school district. You have been outstanding throughout the years, you've been a steadying force, but most importantly, you've always taken care of our kids. And we thank you for your service, we will certainly miss you around, but you're going to come back, right? Yeah, right. But Coach, I can't let you get out of here without saying that, you, you've been outstanding.
No one signed up for our open forums, so I'll bring us into our superintendent's report, our police department report, the intruder detection audit report, Cedar Creek Middle School. Our presenter is Ted Coleman, our safety and security coordinator.
Hey, good evening, board, good evening, Mr. Edwards. This will be a lot shorter than the meeting we had an hour ago. I just want to hit on that really quick because this is a brief summary, it's a requirement from Texas School Safety Center and TEA to report. But these are also reportings that go to our BISD Safety and Security Committee. And something that I just want to highlight really quick, the requirements of that committee as far as the superintendent and the board, it's the superintendent and two board members. I joined the board a couple of years ago when I, when I moved to this position. We have the superintendent and we have four board members. So we exceed the standard in those and we appreciate your support of, of exceeding the minimum. Alright, so our, in, our intruder detection audit finding, we had a, a door found open or discovered at Cedar Creek Middle School. Once the, the door was discovered open, what we sent out had maintenance check out the door, work order was, was called in, it just wasn't latched together, they adjusted the door. Once that is, once that finding occurs, then a whole chain of events occur after, which means that the campus administrator must have a mandatory faculty meeting with everyone, 100% of faculty and staff within 48 hours, remedial training. And then I conduct some remedial training and support the campus however, however they need. We have addressed those issues, I feel those issues have been exceeded and taken care of and I don't find that we'll have any more issues with that. Again, one thing I do want to mention with that is we have several hundred, hundreds of exterior doors that get used hundreds of times. So if, you know, one is too many, I understand that. But I just want to highlight that they're, everyone is doing what they're supposed to do to keep the campus, our students, our staff, everyone safe. Going into that, so we have, we have our end-of-year report from Texas Education Agency with the, with the audit findings. So we're going to back up a few years. Coming in in '22, '23, we had five findings. If you look over in the green, it shows that we had 13 campuses audited. Out of those 13, we had five findings that we addressed and took care of. Moving into '23, '24, we had 15 campuses audited and we had four findings that we had to address. This year, 2024, 2025, we had 15 campuses audited and we had one finding that the corrective actions will be submitted as soon as I finish presenting this. So it's just a, it's, it's all hands on deck with this, making sure everyone's doing what they need to do. And then I want, also want everyone to understand that the state requires that we keep our exterior doors locked. And when auditors started coming out and auditing in different districts and having findings, a lot of folks chose to not require classroom doors to be locked because you're going to ding us for that, that's a finding. Mr. Edwards and the board stood strong with, it doesn't make any sense not, not to have the doors locked, this is what safeguards the kids. There's no incident where a classroom door has been locked and has been breached to where we have a bad incident. So by that decision being made and continuing to enforce what we, what we've already had and what we already started, I think, I think we're doing really good things with this. So this is a lot of growth and a lot of improvement over the last three years. And then the next thing that is, has nothing to do with the audit finding, I just want to highlight the House Bill 496 Stop the Bleed Training. So this is a training that each public school district in the state of Texas must offer for students in grades seven through 12. And it's Stop the Bleed and it's a first aid, about a two and a half, three-hour class. Last year was our first year, Ms. Armstrong was at our, at our first training we had, I think we had three, we had three students show up. This year, we had nearly 100 participants that, that showed up. So a huge, huge growth in this as well. But it, this is also all hands on deck, starting with the communications department, with how they communicated and how they sent this out, flyers, communication, it just, everything just worked out really well. It worked out so well that Ally said, we can't, we can't teach all of those kids, you're going to have to help us. So we called chief, chief says call Sergeant Barner. Sergeant Barner formed a team within 10 minutes that we had an additional six or seven instructors that filled the cafeteria at Bastrop High School that was originally, we were originally going to have the training at the service center. When we saw the numbers rolling up, we knew that we had to, that we had to get a larger place. And then Ms. Gabriel offered that space really quick. So as we're going forward, the safety and security will, will remain our top, our top priority. And we're just, we want to make sure that we're working with our community partners and with the, with leadership at each campus just to enhance school safety as we go forward. I think we've made, we've made really big strides and we're, we're doing good things and we'll continue to do that. Any questions?
I've got one. I know the findings had five interior doors. Now that's a, all, all campuses, how many interior doors you have? So to me, that is, that's just a, a really nice indication of the seriousness that the teachers and administration has as far as the security. And I've visited a couple of elementary schools and I've always wondered why the principal was unlocking doors as we went into classrooms. I didn't grow up with that. And I asked, they said, oh no, they're all locked. So you're doing, I applaud you for, for a very good job being done, securing those students and passing that effort on to the staff and teachers. It's awesome.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other questions?
Next is our Facility and Operations Department Report with the Bond Update. Our presenter is Lee Raspberry, Director of Construction and Planning.
Good evening, Mr. Vice President, members of the board, Mr. Edwards. I'm happy to be here with you this evening to talk about our bond update around the district and talk about some of the construction projects that we currently have underway. Let's first talk about Adleton Elementary. Scheduled to open August 2025, right now, we're shooting for a July 17 certificate of occupancy. Furniture is being delivered on the 14th of July. Trustee Armstrong caught me before the meeting and she said, 65%, are we really going to make it? I'm telling you, it goes up 2%, 2 percentage points a day right now. So we start, we start flooring in two weeks, we start landscaping in two weeks. And so yes, it's going to, we're, we're going to be ready. Certificate of occupancy on 7/15. Furniture on the 16th, we'll be ready for teachers to come back two weeks later. Okay? Come see us. So here's a couple of photos, drone photos. All the roofing's been completed, all the HVAC units have been set, all the HVAC units have gone through startup. We're currently going through commissioning on our mechanical units. So as you can see, lots of stuff going on. That's a great picture, you can see from this, from this elevation, you can see art and band up front, or art and music up front. We've got one more lift of asphalt, but we'll wait till we're just about ready to open before we put that last lift of asphalt down. Here's a good picture. So Principal Guerrero scheduled tours for her staff or for the staff that she had already has onboard. Last week, we went four evenings in a row from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. So we, we took her staff through there in groups of eight or so folks. We went through all of the classroom wings, we went through everywhere. Admin, and they just, they had a really good time. Some of the teachers were running around picking rooms already that, that, so a lot of excitement, the campus is looking good, we're really happy with the, with the, with the state that it's in and with the production and with all the construction team that we've got onboard. Mina Elementary, moving along rapidly actually. First phase demos complete, building pads complete, we poured our first lift of concrete last Saturday morning at 1:00 a.m. So you wouldn't know that unless you lived on Fayetteville, you would know that. But we got, we got word out to all of our neighbors in advance, we let them know that we were pouring, the city had noticed that we were pouring, but that was a pour that we had to do at 1:00 a.m. We have one more Saturday morning at 1:00 a.m., but that's when we have to get that concrete out based on, given, given the, the temperature in the afternoon. Get the finishers out there and be done by 7:00 a.m. There's an aerial view of all of the, all of the beams and spread footings being poured. It's, it's been updated since then, but we didn't get an aerial photo of it. That large section down at the bottom, Area A, has already been poured out. That was what, that's, that's the pour from last Saturday, Saturday morning. Elementary playgrounds and furniture. So we have five elementary schools that are getting new playgrounds, refurbished playgrounds, pour-in-place rubber and shade cloths. These have already started out at Cedar Creek Elementary, we'll finish these up around August, mid-August, or, or first part of August. Lost Pines, Emile Bluebonnet, Cedar Creek and Red Rock. Again, we're removing all of the thigh bar engineered mulch and replacing that with pour-in-place rubber. More ADA accessibility, we're pouring additional sidewalks so that we've got zero accessibility issues for all of our playgrounds. And we are increasing the inclusivity portions of the playground so that all students can, can play, all students can participate, all students can take advantage of all of our playgrounds in all areas and not just select areas. Okay? So we're really proud, really happy about that. There's a, there's a quick photo of Cedar Creek Elementary, this is part of the new, one of the new playgrounds going in, all areas are getting two playgrounds, littles and bigs, five through 12, or two through five and five through 12. So this one's, we started here early because we've got an awful lot of, awful lot of pour-in-place rubber to do. Bastrop and Cedar Creek Middle Schools, steel erection is complete, exterior CMU wall's complete, athletic field work to begin this week, as a matter of fact, we're mobilizing our athletic field sub, so they'll be onsite. Here's Bastrop Middle School, you can see the Fine Arts Wing there. Here at Cedar Creek Middle School, you can see the, the Fine Arts Wing there as well. That's already advanced, the roof's just about done on that portion of the project, that's how quickly they're moving. Both of these projects, the, the, the new additions will be open winter of 2025, so we plan on, plan on moving students back in there, Christmas break. Riverside Middle School, we've finished all but one short phase or small phase of interior renovations. All interior renovations of both Riverside and Creekside will be complete when kids return from summer and get ready to start back 25, 26. Exterior renovations, again, will carry on into, into Christmas break of 2025, but, and that would be the gym in the, in the Fine Arts Wing. Here you see the, the gym at Riverside. They're moving along, all the CMU's been completed thus far. Here is the Fine Arts Wing as well, roof is done, roof is currently done. Creekside, same exact thing, here is your, here's your gym and a portion of the science, science rooms. And here's your Fine Arts Wing, roof is complete there. Bastrop High School, we just received our site permit, so site work is to begin almost immediately, probably within the next two weeks. American Constructors has already begun to mobilize their site work subs, so it's going to be a lot of stuff going on at Bastrop High School, a very orchestrated project between everything that happens behind the high school in Bear Drive as well as the new classroom wing up front. So, but everything's on schedule. You've probably seen these, these photos before, I think I had them on my last update. These are renderings. Cedar Creek High School, just absolutely, just absolutely flying right now. Structural steel is complete. As of, as of the, the update on this, where it says first floor stud framing complete, now the second floor stud framing is all complete. Sky bridge connection is complete. Over the summer, we will go ahead and open that up, do the interior renovations where the sky bridge connects. And, and I mean, it's, there you go. I mean, it's just Bartlett Cock, our construction partner is doing a fabulous job. Here you see the sky bridge connection to the main campus. Another good photo there. Roofing is now complete. Gateway, we have some renovations at Gateway as well, we're going to be, we're going to be starting these in fall 2025. A new security vestibule, we're going to expand the nurses station, we're also going to renovate and expand the cafeteria area or the, the food service area, which is not that big, but we're going to be doing some work in there as well. The project's currently in design development phase, but it's on schedule. Police and Operations, again, another project that's really, really moving along, our construction partners there, Chasco, are doing a great job. moving along. Our construction partners there, Chasco, are doing a great job. Permitting's all complete. Area A slab is poured. B, Area B grade beams and spread footings have already been poured. We just completed all of the domestic water line in the county right-of-way of Lover's Lane. So we've come to our property. We've already started and completed wastewater line all the way back to where our lift pump will be, at the back of the property, on the other side of transportation. So it's really moving along, too. These are great folks to work with. You've probably seen this rendering as well. Here's an aerial. It's changed since then, last week. It's a little bit different now, but just a great, great project. A lot of fill material has been brought up in here. We had to bring that slab up 18 inches. So a lot of work is being done here. And again, Chasco was the right contractor for the job. So we're extremely happy with them. Look forward to moving in there, March of 2026. So just a quick picture of domestic water line. This is a 6-inch water line running down the right-of-way of Lover's Lane. And that's it. Any questions? Happy to answer.
Can I just ask, what is the, I guess, life cycle of the pour-in-place rubber that you're putting around the playgrounds?
15 years on pour-in-place. Yeah. Anything else? Questions?
Next is our financial report. We'll go over the proposed budget for 25, 26, and a child nutrition update. Our presenter is Mike White. Our chief financial officer is probably waiting on answers from the legislature.
You have any, sir? All right. Let's get right into it. As you guys know, we're coming back for, I think this is month four, providing updates. I wish there was more to provide. I'm keeping with the same theme in that I'm giving you updates on kind of where we stood before, some of the information shared. You know, this was referred to as Texas Two Step. So far, we've just seen maybe one step. There has been an adjustment near the end, $5 adjustment. So the final number out of the House was the 6555. The 40% compensation remains the same. That's still the standard of what they sent over to the Senate. So really, this is the, this is what's going on over at the Senate. So that's a, a real-time picture. It's video, actually. That's how quickly they're moving. That's all I have to present on what's going on over in the Senate side. So every, every day I hear rumor or talk of, it's coming any day now, this week, various percentages. So, you know, you guys are kind of in the, in the loop as well. You hear the same things we do. The latest I had is that it was referred to a Senate Education Committee, but not yet posted for a meeting. So disappointing, a little nerve-wracking as we come down the final stretch. So here's where we stand. We reported on the SA bill last month, was signed by the governor and the law on May 3rd. The school finance bill, as I mentioned, is still sitting in the Senate. There's a few other bills that we're tracking. At this point, you're either seeing a lot of movement or you start to see things stall and look for life rafts, if you will, to, to kind of tag on to things that are moving, or things that are being voted on the floor. HP9 increases the business personal property exemption. That has an unknown effect, you know, in terms of our bottom line. Of course, there's, should be held harmless, and there are dollars allocated for that. Senate Bill 4, we talked about the homestead exemption, increased 140,000. That seems to be gathering more support than additional increased compression. Senate Bill 1453, we've seen this in various bills. Also, we'll talk about House Bill 19 a little bit, just making it more difficult, in essence, to defees retire some debt. The board in prior years has, has chosen to take a conservative approach there and pay off some higher interest debt for future years. And so, making that more challenging, specifically in that bill. So at this point forward, we, it's kind of the, the home stretch, if you will. The session ends June 2nd, so it's May 13th. So that doesn't seem like a lot of time, particularly with some of the things that need to happen. May 15th this week, last day, for a bill to be voted out of the House with the second reading. So basically, it's, it's looking dim for any new bills to come, come on forward. And we start getting into the power of the calendars committee, which really sets whether or not a bill is heard on the floor. We happen to have a local legislator on that, the committee, so hopefully that is helpful. School Finance, we, we did meet with them last week, Deputy Superintendent and I, to talk over, you know, advocacy for Bastrop ISD, for public ed. Specifically talked about House Bill 19 a little bit, and we'll talk about, talk about that a little more in a minute. I'm updating property values. This time last month, we did not have preliminary values yet. We, we got those, very modest, little under 3% increase in, in property values. So something to, to be mindful of, as, that's quite a bit of a slowdown from prior years. With really, looking forward to July certified values as the true mark, the, the value which we use to set, you know, our tax rates and, and all those things, all the required public postings. Talked about this slide before. These are the requirements going into the budget process. I won't reiterate all of them. I will say that one of the things that we prioritized, and we didn't touch upon fully, was trying to streamline our campus allocations, those discretionary dollars that principals have. There's various allotments that, that used to be set aside. We've, we've simplified that formula a little bit. Same dollars. What we'd like to do is take that next step. I think we talked about it maybe in April, is to address, you know, rebalance some of those things to make sure that all of our campus needs across the district are taken care of. Does have a price tag, so it is, we are saying it's right now, depending on a new funding. So we haven't taken any action on, on that step yet, but hopefully we will. Same slide as before, we talked about, you know, the, we have to open Adleton, cost of that, the transition, growth positions and special education needs. So this is the same budget, revenue expenditure that we talked about last month. Wanted to break it out into a little bit of detail. And I apologize, it's not bigger. It's hard to, to get all this on even one slide, but spread it out over two. We have the three locally required funds that require board adoption, that being general fund, child nutrition and debt service. So you can see here the various estimates for those. I will say, and this is a good time to address, we've been hoping to have real numbers, right? Instead of having a baseline scenario and a new money scenario, at some point, we're in, we're in May, adopting next month, we had to, ultimately had to move forward with current law. So everything we have here is based on that. Okay? The same expenditures, this is all encompassing all the things we talked about last month. Mostly required items. It doesn't have pay raises, doesn't have addressing all of our needs, and all the things we would like to do if, if we had supplemental funding from, from legislative session. So there for your review, this is, you know, I would like to say, if we have, if, if the Senate makes, gets a bill passed and we have more information, this may look very different. Hopefully, it does look different by the time we adopt. If it does not, we still legally required to adopt the budget by, by June 30th to start our year. We'll have to come back and amend. So at whatever point this gets settled, hopefully in a positive way, it's just going to be a little different. So I appreciate your flexibility. Unfortunately, we're, every district I talked to is taking the same approach, especially those that are June 30th school districts like we are. Okay? A few, a few assumptions at this point. We haven't really talked about rate, tax rates very much, but additional tax compression, that's calculated by TEA based on certified values in early August. It's a very driven formula. So should have that later in the process when we come back for, for tax rate adoption. And then right now, the ISNS rate, we're holding steady at 40.5 cents, the same it's, it's been for a number of years. And we, we will address that in a, in a future meeting where we talk about rates. So just kind of give you the overall picture where we're at. We're in May. So this is the proposed budget. So we're looking at, you know, a few more weeks of this legislative session and coming back in June to adopt a budget, whatever that looks like, and in August or September, the tax rate. So here's a slide that I've updated a little bit. Continued delays, hopeful for this week. I think I've said that every week, though. We have confirmed there are negotiations. The alignment that we hoped for early on in the session seems less likely. There's talk of, of working on some of the differences in, in the conference committee. I'm going to tell that crosses the finish line and, and gets cleared by the governor's desk. It's all, you know, hope and a prayer. But we'll see what comes in, in future weeks. So HB19 is what we talked about. One of the things Christie Lee and I addressed with our legislator, that has a lot of tricky language related to debt service. The biggest limiting our potential future debt service by somewhat arbitrary calculation of our, 20% of our average tax collections anyways. It would greatly limit our future capacity to issue debt. As we continue to be a fast-growth district, you could see how that would be problematic. Right? So this has, all elections moving in November. It has, it has a lot. But that, that, that concern about our ability to, to build schools when we need to build schools down the road was one of the things that, that we raised a concern about, as well as the economic impact for our community, all communities across the state. So we're going to be watching that closely. If it proceeds, we might be coming back to you to go ahead and sell the remaining authorized bond, bonded indebtedness. If it doesn't, we would continue on our current schedule of, of doing that early next year. So that's something we're going to continue to watch, and we've already taken measures to, to handle it either way, honestly, depending on what comes of the session. Active Care Medical Insurance Rates still won't come out for at least a couple more weeks. But we did get early indications that our property and casualty rates are coming back down to earth. I think there was a, it's a 40, 40-plus percentage increase there, and with all the recent claims history across the state. So that was positive news. And then, of course, continuing to watch student growth. We talked about the later calendar, later this summer. Here's what that looks like, coming back to you for adoption in June, and really, and then doing all the rest of the formal steps in August to September. So that's a lot of, I wish it was more. I wish I had more finality to that, but going to continue to watch, see what happens.
June 2nd is the latest that legislation could take. Is that correct to come up with?
When the regular session ends. You know, you'll call, two years ago, they went into November. So I guess it depends on if they decide to call one, if they don't get anything done by then. You know, I'm interested to see what that looks like in coming weeks, but.
Either way, we have to pass a budget by the end of June.
By law, yes.
And our, and our, our board meeting is the 17th? So if we don't have the information we need by the 17th, would we call a special meeting later that month? Or is that?
Well, it's really at the discretion of the board. I mean, we're going to legally adopt the, a budget, no matter what. Now, whether or not it's based on the, you know, the latest school funding information, I, I assume we'll make that decision in coming weeks. But I anticipate it could be the, we could start off with current law and then amend. We could call a meeting or wait, wait till August. We haven't really talked about that. I'm hoping that's not a problem we have, but.
Go with the information we have.
Absolutely.
And then we amend it later.
We have to move forward at this point. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
What, you mentioned one of your slides that you streamlineded. So can I interpret that, that you've taken some budget items away from the campus level and brought them up to the district level? Or how did you streamline that?
No, ma'am. When I looked back at last year's budget worksheets, there was a base amount per student. There was money for PE. There was money for technology and those kinds of things. And also some fixed money for library and some discretionary money for library. So I took the, the allotment those campuses had, right, added it together, divided by the number of students, and then extrapolated out. So the, the earmarks or the, the basis of, of setting aside certain monies like that, I, I thought probably not the most effective way to do it. And this way gave more discretion to the principals. Now, ideally, I'd love to even take the next step and, and address some of the other concerns about equity we talked about with, when I say that, I just mean the demographics across the campuses and various campus-specific needs. So, yeah, so, so far, all we've done is simplified the same amount, same amount of dollars. Now, of course, as we rezone and you have more or less students, then, you know, the total allotment could differ, but it's still student-based. Library is the only thing that we really got centralized input. So I did work with Chris Larissy a little bit about, you know, at least a minimum for a library book. So that was kind of the middle ground. Based on historical budgeting for library, I didn't see the other items being a concern. I did tell him if they, if there's some concerns there, we'll revisit. And just trying to, you know, normalize it a little bit.
On the per-student allocation, did you also take into effect some students, depending on the classification of the student, special needs?
Sure. And that's the campus concerns I'm talking about.
Okay. So they, you adjusted that allocation per student based on?
We're hoping to adjust, adjust that allocation per student and, and have a blended rate between a, the number of kids that walk in the, in the door each day and the night, and the type of kids.
Right.
So that's the phase two that I was looking at next year. We, we started working on it for this year. It does have a price tag, and so we're trying to, you know, we're, like, you've heard me say a lot, we're, we've been waiting on funding, awaiting on funding before making that commitment. So if we don't receive any funding, we'll have to revisit that and make a decision there. But.
Are you still, is it still planning that once, if a campus goes below 800, that they're going to reduce the assistant principal? And then you'll put an MTSS as opposed to trying to keep two, two assistant principals? Because I know last, last month, you all mentioned that if, if the campus goes below 800, you're going to, and, as opposed to two assistant principals, you're going to reduce it down to one. Is that still the case?
I can start off and you can supplement if you need to. I, I would say that the staffing considerations we talked about last month haven't changed. We haven't revisited them. I don't recall specifically if you wanted to add about.
So the decision on the 800 for elementary?
I, I know. That's just a number that y'all came up with.
Right. Was whether they, they maintained having two APs. So for next year, those campuses that already only have the one AP, they're not going to lose an AP, and the ones that have the second AP aren't going to lose them. So we're not planning to lose any staff. And then we're adding back the four MTSS positions to those campuses that have the one AP.
Just the one. Okay. Then that was my misunderstanding from, from last month. Okay. Good. Thank you.
Yes, just one. And actually, this is a little bit different topic, which might include Jennifer. This is, this was a topic that was brought up in the weir about the ESAR liquidation extensions on the math supplemental curriculum to the tune of about 300,000. There was a statement in there that said there would be a backup plan potentially for that funding. Is that through TEA? Or would that be something that Mike would have to make room for at some point? Thanks, Jennifer. And then my second question is really about the reception that you and Christie, you know, did you have, did you feel good about the meeting that you recently had for the advocacy comment?
I think that we made some good connections with this chief of staff and their legislative staff that are really kind of boots on the ground. One, from the formerly worked with the senator. So trying to get a little bit more plugged in on what's going on that side because our rep has done a good job of keeping us in the loop. Of course, you know, from their point of view, they sent over what was a pretty, pretty good bill to the Senate. So now we're kind of trying to, to, in fact, figure out a way to advocate on, on that front as well. So, did you want anything?
Oh, consideration about the new requirement for assessment of non-district students for special education requirements that is supposedly going to happen, that we'll be required to assess students without necessarily having That we'll be required to assess students without necessarily having them then enroll be enrolled in our district?
I'm probably out of my depth on that one. I would have to to come maybe get with with Derek or, you know, around this tribe.
I don't think there's been any talk about.
Yeah, I haven't seen that specifically. There's so many bills just waiting through the ones that are moving and the ones that are financed. It's really been my focus, but anything that has implications for special programs, we're working on. You know, it's just a measure of how 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 involved you get until it really starts to become a serious bill.
Yeah, that's a serious part, yeah.
Yeah, we might know my more by next month, so if I we we do, we'll definitely report back.
Talk about the child nutrition, did I read?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, that's.
That's next.
Once we get through all our budget fund, we'll get right to the food service fund, so. Yes, sir. Any other questions? Good deal. All right, moving right along. So I wanted to give you guys an update. We we have given you a little idea of of the direction we're going here. As you know, we've been we've been outsourced in this area for for well, ten years plus. And so, starting in the early spring, we were we were evaluating our options moving forward. We've had to go out to to bid and follow a very tedious at times process through TDA to to competitively procure and go through their process to select a food service contractor, which we've done repeatedly over the past few years. So we've been kind of evaluating our options and that kind of came to a head in May where we kind of got to the point of no return of of talking about what we wanted to do for next year. So let me start here. This is a little bit of of the background I'm talking about. We used to have our in our food service department in-house through two thousand twelve. And so for looking back, you could see that we first went out with Chartwells and from twelve to sixteen, then SFE for five years, then with Aramark and the last couple of years with with Tahoe. So despite the fact that Tahoe's been a great partner and been, you know, pleasant to work with and 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 we've had a good experience. You'll know you'll recall that we went back, used to outsource facilities and operations a couple of years ago. And we decided to to bring that in-house. And so part of the consideration throughout this process has been that successful endeavor. We're kind of seeing some of the fruits of that decision, some of the things that come with that control over your program and and, you know, the impact it has on your kids and your campuses. So we've we've kind of been exploring that. And in May, we decided that we thought the best thing for our kids was to bring the operation in-house. So we 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 did not accept any of the bids that were that were proffered. And this has been the timeline since and then in the timeline that administration has taken to 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 make this change. We let TDA know of our of our decision about ten days ago. We notified the board of what we knew at the time. Since then, we've we've posted a director position and been facilitating, trying to get great candidates for review. And the next steps would be interviewing those candidates and finding a great leader to help us then build out the rest of the staff, develop our own program and and talk about using this summer to transition our food service program in-house in the same way that we we do with facilities. So really, the the driving force was behind that was, you know, if I go back to this slide here, the impact on our employees and our kids, you know, for four different options. Maybe a fifth if we had gone back out and and depending on what that bidding process looked like. It's been a lot of a lot of change, right? And, you know, with the the process that TDA has, I'll I'll say that it's no secret that I think it's commonly, it's common knowledge that TDA doesn't seem to prefer contracted providers. They seem to discourage it. I'm not quoting them. I'm just telling you that's the the understanding that most on our side have. And, you know, even if we were to go to this bridge, finish this bid process now, it's something that this one was triggered from a little bit of growth, you know, additional schools. Well, as a fast growth school, there's so many unknowns. So just looking at that change now and and continued in the future, we thought we can control our own program. We can see that we can reap the results of of strong leadership. We can kind of chart our own course and we felt like we had the team to do it. And we're going to find somebody great and we're going to we're going to move in that direction. So we wanted to get back in front of the board for the sake of transparency and keeping you in the loop and get in front of the community. We did communicate with staff at the same time that we notified all the the manager, the companies involved. And at the same time, we notified TDA, it was all very quickly because we wanted everybody to know what there was to know. So I know I'm throwing a lot at you, so I imagine there's some questions. So I'll just open the floor for any of those questions.
It's been no secret over the years, every time I'm doing the application to have an outsourced food service provider, that it seems to be the state. This is encouraging districts to bring everything in-house.
That seems to be the.
And with that, you know, I there were lots of benefits that we saw through Tahoe and even others, you know, where they came to the high schools and got the kids to participate. Do you anticipate that continuing to have having our our students participate and have the special occasions?
Yeah, they've done a lot of great things. I think Mr. Tahoe, Bruce. Recently, and they've done that throughout their time there. That's why I say they've been a strong partner. I would say that my answer to that would be we're going to hire a great director and they're going to put together a great program. So a lot of this, you know, the offerings and engaging the kiddos and, you know, getting out at our campuses and really the, like I say, I chart our chart our course. But those are the kind of things a great leader, a great direct director of food service can do to bring their years of experience and, you know, offer those kind of suggestions. So all those kind of things are possibilities for us in-house as well. We're going to hire, you know, look at hiring a dietitian, making sure our menus are full and nutritious and and hopefully, you know, great tasting food. You know, the variety and some of the programs they brought were really neat. And those are the kind of things we can do as well. So I think it's a matter of great leadership.
What how? We have a budget of the food services currently. So how does bringing it in-house, how is that going to be, you know, how are you developing the budget? What are you looking at? What's the whole process on that?
Um, right now, we, of course, we don't have the positions in 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 on on hand. But I will say that the current budget with the contractor has, I would say, a break even, but a little bit of a small profit there as a guarantee. And so we're anticipating with our free and reduced rates and funding level to break even or to to have a small profit. It's not really that that's the the motive, but you don't want to lose money. You don't want the general fund to have to to cover losses, which some.
Be the same budget amount?
More or less, yeah. I took our growth level of moving, you know, we did out of campus. So it's rough math, you know, sixteen campuses extrapolated out to seventeen, given that the revenues expenditures kind of balance. So as we grow, you know, with our with our population and level for introduced, I anticipate it being pretty close. Of course, we may we may fine tune a number of these areas as we have more information. But I felt it was enough to bring bring to you tonight my projection, if you were, so.
When we did this with maintenance and operation, there were some upfront costs, equipment, that sort of thing. Is there any of that that we need to?
Yeah, I don't anticipate quite the same dynamic. There were some, let me see how to say this. There were some needs that maybe hadn't been addressed by our our third party. And so we we poured some money into facilities for those first couple of years. Food service, we've really, you recall, this spring, we we put about a million dollars into our equipment into our equipment in our facilities. Now, some of that, we had excess fund balance and so TDA doesn't like you to, you know, generate a lot of dollars and not put them back into your cafeterias and we agree. So that equipment's ours. The work that's been done there, I mean, they operate our kitchens, but it's it's been our kitchen, it's our facility, it's it's our equipment. We can order the same food. So a lot of it is it's not quite the same as as the facility to transition, if you will. So we're we're talking to other districts. Lockhart is has been a great partner with us, giving us insights. They went down this road two years ago, right? And so their food service director and CFO have been in contact with us and offering to help, you know, their insights, the lessons they learned. So we're kind of learning from that. One other district in in region thirteen as well, maybe New Braunfels, I'm drawing a blank on the other. I I left message, but I haven't made the connection, but so kind of learn from them. You know, I'm sure the smallwares and some of the marketing materials and some of the some of those things, we'll have to, you know, we'll have this summer to kind of create our own. And, you know, new menus, offerings, those things, so.
Will the staff remain the same? I mean, it is the.
The cafeteria staff.
The staff, our district employees?
Uh, no, the well, no, no, the the current staff were were Tahoe employees. Now, I will say, I think to your question, the cafeteria staff will be coming over, I I assume if if they're interested in in remaining on site and and continuing to serve our kids. The leadership, we talked about the director, we want to have that person hired first because, you know, you want their insight into all the other decisions to be made. So I can't speak for every position, but I think that the lion's share would be they would become backdrop employees. There's no contractual reason why.
I mean, I guess my question is, they're they're not BISD employees.
Correct, they're Tahoe employees.
Okay, okay, but hopefully you'll offer them the position first.
That's the plan, yes. Assuming they're all interested, I would think they would be. I think we have some great, you know, our pay is competitive, our benefits are great. So, yeah, that will be a challenge for for Diana and and her team this summer. I feel sorry for her, she's. Been a trooper, been a trooper about it, but we're going to get through it. And of course, the impact, you know, purchasing and payroll and all the things that go with ordering food and getting the vendors set up, we're working through all that now. And but, yeah, we're we're we've already been exploring all those things. So we're confident that it'll it'll be as seamless as we can make it, so.
Mike, I just have one question. It's actually for Diana, not for you. So the director, the the cube that says director hired here, Diana, is that on a one-year contract or two-year contract or?
Well, initially, your probationary is the one year.
So it does have a probationary component, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, sir.
Our curriculum and human resources reports are for information only, but are there any questions from any of the board members?
I do have some questions and hopefully I'll get the name right. The first one is under the curriculum instruction department under for Derek. Is he here or no? Oh, okay, good, good, thank you. I just, if you can explain or just in here, you were saying that we're piloting the transformative service delivery models and then you went down and had case management. What is the transformative service delivery models?
Two different pilot programs that special programs will be kicking off next year. One, the the transformative part that you're talking about there is a four-day service model. We're piloting that program at Cedar Creek Elementary, Cedar Creek or Creekside Middle School, Cedar Creek Middle School and Cedar Creek High School. And so that applies to programs like inclusion that are currently done five days a week. We're changing the minute structure there so that it would allow special education teachers to deliver all of those minutes within four days and then have and have a day kind of set aside for planning and art preparation. That's the transformative service model.
Okay, okay.
And the full-time case manager is for Cedar Creek Middle School and Cedar Creek High School. Those are two positions at each campus that would they're certified special education teachers, but they would they would just full-time case manage a caseload of students. They would not be providing any instruction into the classroom.
Is there a reason why just Cedar Creek Middle School and Cedar Creek High School was, are they just the two that you're going to do the pilot and hopefully extend to the other schools? And that involves Mike, yes? Because that's budget.
Well, absolutely. So we wanted to start with us with a a smaller set of campuses in order to work out any kinks and see how things go before we expand it to other campuses within the district. And we selected those campuses because those campuses traditionally have been a little bit harder for us to hire staff at really. So we're hoping that part of this pilot programs is is that it's an enticement for teachers to want to come and work because they've got the four-day service model, which then allows them that day to plan. And then on the campuses that have the full-time case managers, they can really focus on the instruction while we've got those full-time case managers really taking care of the things like progress reporting for special education students.
So these are non non instruct- non-teachers?
The full-time case managers.
I mean, they may be teachers, but they're not going in the classroom.
They're certified teachers, but they would not be providing direct instruction to students in a classroom. That's correct.
Interesting, I look forward to hopefully expanding it if need be.
Yeah, yeah, we're we're excited about it. We're excited about it.
That would be nice. The next, yeah, and the next one, I think Jennifer is yours. And it goes it it's it goes along with with the teaching and learning and then also with the communications. We all know what came out on the community impact. And Jennifer, under yours, your teaching and learning, the very last one, it says the collaborative effort underscores the district's commitment to continuous improvement instructional excellence. And I know I've in past meetings, I've said, I know the students get, they have maps and then they have the units and then they have assessments. And I was I questioned on the amount of assessments that the students were going over. And then you have the STAR pre-test taking and 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 such as that. I'm and then, of course, the scores came out and they're not very good. Again, I'll go back to all this assessment. Is is it, are we doing what we're supposed to be doing? I mean, are we doing? Are we doing the right thing? Not just checking off a box? But I mean, we are we are trying to monitor the students' performance so that we get, okay. And. We are monitoring. Okay, well, in your opinion, and I just read it, that the STAR test may go three times a year. How's that going to affect? How you is that a good thing, bad thing? I mean, I don't think it's permanent, I they haven't finalized it, but is that a good thing, bad thing? Hopefully work out, I mean. Yeah, I would think three tests as opposed to a year-end test. Remembering when I had to take that final exam of everything, yeah, that was hard. I think this might be more of the human resources. Can I go ahead and do it? It has to do with Dr. Morris. Is she or she you might be able to answer this under her section. It says principals will select three campus staff to attend medical coverage, professional development. development. They're going to kind of take the, or not take the place, but hopefully assist the registered nurses, distribute. They'll be, the individual will be able to assist students in days the nurse is off-site, attend field trips to provide medical support for children taking medications, health, health conditions such as asthma, epilepsy. Staff members will receive eighteen hours of training from registered nurses on medication administration using Narcan. Does that, these aren't going to be, these aren't going to be nurses. Does that open up the district with some liability as, you know, my goodness gracious, the Narcan got stuffed on the shoulder as opposed to the thigh, or you dispersed medications that shouldn't have been dispersed? How does that affect...
No, they would only be doing the things that would be required by law and that they have been trained to do.
But they're still not medical. They're not nurses. They're not...
Actually administer as well?
They can?
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay. That was just my concern of, I mean...
No, it's valid.
Give me eighteen hours, and I still wouldn't want to do it, so, all right. And the other one I have is human resources. Just, just a question, and I know we've done, in our package, we have those who you hire and those that we've, you know, that resigned. And I've counted in this package that there was seventy-six resignations. How does that affect our, our, our teachers' open positions coming up in September? I know we're hiring some, but we've got seventy-six that are leaving. And so, how does, how does that affect the classrooms and having a certified teacher being able to take over in September?
We have started hiring actually in March, and so, we, you know, you expect some stay-at-home moms, people transferring because of spouses, and so, we know there's going to be a little bit of that. So, we start posting mid-February. They can start hiring as of March first. And so, we, we know some of that is coming, looking for, we tier the, initially, they can only hire certified teachers, and then it goes to people who are degreed in an ACP program, and then, you know, then further on into DOI, but after we've given weeks and weeks of looking for fully certified, which is our goal, to try to get certified teachers in the classroom.
Well, the seventy-five hopefully filled.
Yes.
In the April meeting, in our package, there was the stay, stay interviews. What's the status of that? When the teachers are leaving, you're doing an interview or stay interview? And you mentioned that a report was...
Yes, I need to get with Jen to get that finalized, but she is, that data is her area, so she loves that and is getting things finalized. But, you know, that was always one of my favorite things to go out and do. By the time you get a resignation from somebody, the decision's made, whether they're moving or, you know, whatever, can't find housing, things that we can help with. But when you're there at the stay interview, you're hearing things that you can actually come back and immediately make changes on. So, it's one of my favorite things to go out and do. So, I'll bring that and make sure I have the data for the next board meeting.
Thank you, thank you.
Of course. All right.
And that's, that's it.
Next is our consent agenda. Would any board member like to pull any of the consent agenda items for discussion? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Action items. Consider adoption of a resolution designating UMB Bank N.A. as paying agent registrar for certain of Bastrop Independent School District's outstanding public securities and matters related thereto. Our presenter again is Mr. White, Chief Financial Officer.
So, many of you are probably wondering what a paying agent is. It's, it's definitely in the minutia of a bond transaction, but paying agent is simply the middleman between when we make our bond payments in February and August to apply them to the bondholders. So, they charge a small percentage, and they basically are clearing house, like maybe you pay your school taxes and it gets paid as part of your mortgage, but then, you know, paid on to the, those that are taxing. I will say, in February, it was, we had a frustrating experience with our current paying agent, Bank of New York Mellon. It motivated me to come back to you in May and look like, and look at changing partners. I've always had a great experience with UMB and others, so did a little bit of research, had a good company, and these are the folks that have our bond payments in their hands twice a year into perpetuity. So, I just thought it was warranted a change. So, I come into you with that recommendation.
Do you have any questions?
I, yeah, I do. I must admit, toward the end, I kind of liked those, I guess, requirements about boycotting and issue all that. Is that standard in, in that? Yeah, that was, that was awesome. Then at the very end, well, there was two things. They said payment can't be more than a hundred thousand toward this, the issuer and the bank hereby certified that the agreement does not have a value of a hundred thousand or more. Is that what we're paying the, this company?
Paying agent?
Uh-huh.
That would be very, on the high end, I would think.
Well, it says it can't be more, so...
Right, and that's, honestly, once bond counsel and the attorneys get a hold of these things, you know, you start, yeah, I mean, you see the, I would have to defer to them. I can't imagine, we don't ever see those minor fees that get paid as just part of the transaction. I couldn't ever foresee it being anywhere near that territory, but I couldn't give you a specific dollar amount.
Okay. And then, in the, in the contract, there was also a, some attorney. I forget the name of it. When do we pay them, or do we pay them on a retainer, or how is...
Oric, is that the firm? They're a bond counsel. They get paid, well, you know, attorneys, they get paid when they help you with things and get paid on a transactional basis. We've used them for all our deals, I think, going back some years. They were already our partner. Exactly how they get paid, I may have to get you the details on that. Probably separately, depending after the deal.
Does that come out of the bond funds, or how, how are they paid?
Yes.
Okay.
I think so. If you'd like to give me, I don't have that information offhand.
We're still going to meet on Thursday?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm supplanting either.
If you can get it, then that's great, yeah.
Yeah, I can pull that together for you. I honestly, off the top of my head, I, there's so many post-bond trans, post-issuance fees that we pay, I just don't off the top of my head recall.
That's fine, yeah. Okay, thank you. I move to approve the, wait a minute, which one is? Yes, I move to approve the adoption of the resolution designating UMB Bank N.A. as paying agent registrar for certain of Bastrop Independent School District's outstanding public securities and matters related thereto as presented.
I have a second.
Second.
Then move and second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, we'll consider an approved term in probationary contracts for teachers recommended by the administration. Our presenter is Diana Green, Director of Human Resources.
Mr. Edwards, members of the board. I just had a final few, it's standard for us to bring the majority of our teacher contracts in April, and so, I have a few more contract recommendations this evening. The majority, again, were already presented. We finalize things such as finishing up evaluations. We have, you know, if somebody's out on leave and the process is delayed a bit, or just some administrative procedural steps that they need to finish up. So, I have now just a handful to recommend bringing forward for your approval. I have some, I have the handouts here. You want to take a look at them? I don't know if they were already presented? You want? I believe they're in the book already. I don't have a, let me go ahead just to be safe and hand out, they are in the book already. Okay, so, we're good. I was going to say, I don't have a nice color copy. Marilyn, who handles our contracts, had a baby today, so we're excited for her. So, I wanted to just bring those final, I believe, five staff members forward.
I move to approve the term in probationary contracts for teachers recommended by the administration as presented.
Second.
Then move and second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. We have information items, including the board of trustees' calendar of events, enrollment in Bastrop Central Appraisal District, 2026 proposed budget, which are for information only. Does any member of the board have anything to bring before this meeting for the good of the dish before adjournment? If not, then we adjourn.